It is 5:00. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville. The City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy's absence is noted. Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. This is the time when we have public comments, and I don't see anyone that needs to approach the council, or I don't see anyone in the audience. So we will have declaration of closed session by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia. We have five closed session items this evening. Two are existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1. The litigation is set forth on the agenda. One of those is for the airport authority, and one is for the city council. It's the SEC litigation. Case number's on the agenda. Two additional items are real property negotiations, one for the city council. That's pursuant to government code 54956.8. The property locations and the negotiating parties is set forth on the agenda. The next is a real estate negotiations on behalf of the water district, also pursuant to government code 54956.8. And again, the property locations and parties to negotiate are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, we have an item under the provisions of an audit by the state auditor's office pursuant to government code 54956.75. To the extent there is reportable action, we will report it either at the conclusion of the closed session or at the commencement of the 6:00 regular meeting.
Thank you. We will recess to close session, and our meeting will convene at 6:00 p.m.
I think we have all here.
It is 6:00. And I call to order the meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville, and the City Council sitting is the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, successor agency to the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Joint Powers Financing Authority, the Victorville Water District, and the Victorville Housing Trust. May we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Kennedy's absence is noted. Councilmember McEckern?
Here.
Councilmember Negretti?
Here.
Mayor Protem Cox?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here. May we have the announcements by the city attorney on our closed session, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Garcia. We had five closed session items this evening. They're all set forth on the agenda. Two were existing litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, one of which was for the airport authority, the other was for the city council. The case name and case numbers are set forth on the agenda. Two were for real property negotiations, one for the city council pursuant to government code 54956.8. The property location, the negotiating parties are all set forth on the agenda. That's item C. Item D was on behalf of the water district, again, real estate negotiations pursuant to government code 54956.8. Again, the parcel numbers and the negotiating parties are set forth on the agenda. And lastly, there was an audit by the state auditor's office pursuant to government code 54956.75. And there is absolutely no reportable action with respect to any of those items at this time.
Thank you. At this time, we will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance. And the invocation will be delivered by Pastor Dane Davis, Christian Church. And secondly, we will have the pledge of allegiance led by Police Chief Sam Lucia.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's pray. Father God, we thank you so much for this evening that you've given us, and as we've just come off of this Easter weekend, we thank you that we get to pray to a God who is very much alive and well and interested in the affairs of this council tonight. Father, I just, as I ask each time I step up here, I ask for your wisdom, your guidance, for our mayor, for each of the city council members, our city manager, our staff in the city. And we thank you, Lord, that you have answered prayers in recent years, as this council's helped to lead us into better territory financially and otherwise. And I just pray for your continued wisdom, guidance, discernment as they make decisions tonight. None of us in this room believe these decisions are easy, so we do pray that you be with them. We pray that you give them unity and oneness and perseverance as they move this city forward. And we pray that all that goes on would be honoring to you. In its in Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We now have two presentations. The first one will be a proclamation that will be accepted by Lena Russell of Donate Life California. The second one will be a proclamation that will be received by Lesford H. Duncan, San Bernardino County Children and Family Services. I think it's, yeah, it's on. Okay, thank you. This proclamation will be actually presented to Lena Russell. Because millions of lives are saved each year by those who register with the DMV Donate Life Registry. On behalf of the City Council of the City of Victorville, we hereby declare April 2015 as Donate Life California Month in the City of Victorville. And would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much. I really appreciate the city. This is the second year you've participated and given us a proclamation. And I would like to thank our city councilman for placing a rose on our float this year. We were so honored to have that, and we're looking for it for December 29th again. By the way, everybody put the name, uh, date down for you to again to come and be our guest and place a rose on our float. Some of you might know the city councilman, Paul Russ. He received a kidney from his brother several years ago, and his brother passed away, not because of the kidney, for something else. And he was there with us and also placed a rose. Right now, we have 125,000 people that are waiting for a life-saving organ, and if they don't get it, they're going to pass away. And every day I wake up, there will be a total of 25 people that will pass away today from not getting that life-saving organ. My, myself, I received a lung three years and six months ago, which is a very rare transplant and very difficult to get, not only because of the match, but because of the size. And a lot of people that know me know about my story about the lung transplant, but I've never mentioned the fact that 18 years ago, my husband, who was a placement, a sniper shooter for the SWAT team, ended up on life support also. I did not understand or was aware of brain dead. I got educated very quickly, within a matter of two days. Also, at that time, when the decision was made and I accepted the fact and signed the papers, a team from Legacy One came in to talk to me about donating his organs. I was so confused, I did not understand it. My daughter, she talked me into it. She said, "Mom, Dad would want to do this." And because he was so young and healthy. So I said yes, and never looked back, never gave it another thought, and I never dreamed 15 years later, I would personally need an organ. So when I got that organ so quickly, and you die on that lung list, believe me, any of you officers that happen to know, Jeff Toll, he's my nephew, his mother was on that list, three years since she passed away, waiting for that life-saving organ. And so it became an obsession with me that I spread the word up here, and I was absolutely shocked that out of four hospitals from Barstool, and the three up here, we have not had one donor for 2014. A little hard to understand that, you know? I'm very surprised. So I made the decision to adopt different cities and do what we call awareness and education. This year, however, January, we were able to save five lives from one hospital up here. I really appreciate your time and you supporting our cause, because like I said, it's, you don't realize how important it is until you wake up one day and you need that organ, or your son, or your daughter, or somebody you love. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. I really appreciate it.
Now I have Lesford Duncan. If you will, please come forward. Because it takes an aware and responsive community to protect our children. On behalf of the City Council of the City of Victorville, we hereby declare April 2015 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Victorville. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Garcia, city council members, attendees. As introduced, my name is Lesford Duncan. I'm representing the County of San Bernardino Children's Network. Our agency, to give you a little bit of background, works as one of the central county agencies coordinating services as it relates to children, especially children that are at risk of abuse, neglect, exploitation, and other behavioral issues. This month, we bring attention to child abuse as it is National Child Abuse Prevention Month. Here in San Bernardino County, we have some of the most startling statistics in the nation. We've had over 30,000 referrals to Children and Family Services for incidences of abuse and neglect right here in our county. And in terms of statistics, here in Victorville, we see over 2,000, almost 3,000 incidences of child abuse, or reports of child abuse in the City of Victorville. So I truly appreciate the support of Mayor Garcia, the city council, in raising awareness. It really takes a community to address this issue. It really takes concerned citizens reporting any suspected case of child abuse to our national hotline through, or to our county hotline through 211. So thank you again, and thank you.
May we have the city clerk present agenda to council and revisions to the agenda, please?
The City Council of the City of Victorville welcomes the public's participation in tonight's meeting. Persons who wish to address the council on a specific item or any item that does not appear on the agenda are requested to complete one of the white speaker cards located in the council chambers lobby and give it to the city clerk prior to the meeting. The mayor will call upon each individual who has submitted a speaker card. Pursuant to government code section 54954.3, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per speaker or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor. Communications are to be addressed directly to the city council. Individual comments to staff or members of the audience are not permitted. Any individual or group who engages in disruptive conduct during the meeting will be removed from the chambers by the order of the mayor. Thank you for your cooperation. All documents to be considered for approval at this meeting are before the council. There is only one revision to tonight's agenda, which has been provided to the public and is on the dais for the council. This is related to item number D8. It is an email communication received today in opposition to the council's support of AB 914. And those are all the revisions we have.
Thank you. This evening, we do not have any appeal hearings or public hearings. Therefore, we move on to consent counter. And items C1 through C11 can be approved with one motion unless there is an item that needs to be removed for discussion.
I saw move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Councilmember Kennedy absent.
Now we go on to D, written communications. D1, Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number one, Citywide 1. The adopted resolution number 15-006 for the existing Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number one, setting the time, date, and place for a public hearing pursuant to Proposition 218 and the proposed assessment amount and an annual cost inflator in accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 and Proposition 218 for the perpetual maintenance of the landscape and irrigation systems and facilities. And two, approve the engineer's report for the existing Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number one.
I'm prepared to make the motion. It's not approving it. It's actually setting the time, date, and place for the hearing, but can, can we find out when the last time these were bid? Is there a local bidder? Is there local bidder preference? And what is the administrative fee that's attached to each of the assessment districts?
Mayor Protem, the, excuse me, I don't recall the exact date. I would ask Doug Matthews, who's our Assistant Director of Public Works, to come up and discuss the actual maintenance of these. I know you're concerned about the cost, which is the reason for your question. Doug, if you can give us some ideas to when these were last bid, what that process was like?
And if you don't have all the data, we're gonna have, assuming there's enough votes here to go ahead and set the hearing, we're gonna get the information there, but whatever the answers are, should be included at that time when they have the public hearing, so that the public can see that data, since some of these increases are substantial.
Yeah, these were bid, it was right about at 2009, 2010 for the contractor. He's been doing an excellent job. We went from just paying them a lump sum per square foot to paying him per hour. We schedule him every week and tell him where he's going, what he's gonna do. He'll send the crew out. So we got a lot better response that way, rather than just releasing him and saying, "You're gonna get X amount to go to these districts and go do it," and then they weren't looking so well. So we kinda changed our approach. After going through all this, some of the problems we have is this, this assessment district number one is at about 21 cents a square foot. We need to collect between 45 and 55 cents a square foot to be able to maintain these in an adequate way. So the big issue is, you know, there's just not enough money in there to be able to take care of them, whether it's the electricity and water usage or the contractor costs. But there's not much overhead in this. We have very few staff members that go out and work on these. It's mostly contract services.
Yeah, this one was formed in 1987 at 21 cents, and there was no escalator to adjust for any cost increase. So part of the election that would be done under Proposition 218 would be to increase the fee, but then also add a modest inflator based on the CPI or whatever it is. I don't recall exactly which one, so that we don't run into this problem in the future, to whereas costs rise theoretically, the CPI or whatever the inflator would rise at a similar level, so that we don't end up upside down.
We actually spent the last two years doing what we deemed was an adequate level of service. After that time, we went back and analyzed every cost that was out there, and over the eight assessment districts came up with what we felt was a reasonable per square foot assessment cost. So we really have our arms around what it takes to take care of these areas. I don't know if you've gone out there and driven them lately, but seen how well they're trimmed and pruned and fertilized, they look a lot better.
I did. I went and looked at them, and I remarked to our city manager that I'm sure the people who live in those LMS will agree, they look really good. And there were workers every place in almost everyone that I went to. So it's looking very good now.
And one of the things we did is we spent the last couple of years doing as much as we could to make them as nice as they could. We certainly didn't want to go out to a vote having them not look well. We wanted to get them looking nice and do the best we can before we have, if we have to cut back services, before we did that.
And the last question, I'm sorry to dominate this, but we're hearing a lot about drought, cutting back on water, using natural plants, rock, and almost anything other than something that uses water. Are we going to have any on the report at the time of the public hearing that indicates a change? How we have to address the LMS from this point forward?
We basically, right now, follow drought tolerant landscaping, which is recommended by MWA, and the city has guidelines on that. So we don't allow turf, we don't allow, you know, certain plants that use a lot of water. And it's a great point, too, because in the other LMS, we've spent money in the past couple of years putting in ET water smart controllers, so our operators can turn on and off and change timing on our 100 controllers out there, just from an iPad, from an iPhone. So if it's raining, he can shut them off for two days, you know? Time of year changes, I don't, he doesn't have to go around to 100 clocks and spend two, three days out there adjusting time schedules. They can be categorized by type of plant, type of soil, sun exposure, many different things, so we can control it a lot better. So one of the things in these three assessment districts that we're looking at tonight, we don't have those ET controllers in there yet. So that further exacerbates the problem, is we'd like to get those in there, so we can control the water costs in there as well. The big costs in here are our contractor costs, our water and electricity, plant replacement, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Do you make a motion, Mr. Cox?
I will make a motion, adopted resolution number 15-006.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
And then, do I have to, I should have asked this first, my apologies.
Should, does that include the engineer's report, or does that require second action?
That could include the engineer's report.
Was to approve?
If your motion was to include it, then it would be included.
It was, yes. Both of them were together, and that's what we were talking about.
Yeah, and that was in nature of my second.
Thank you.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
Madam Mayor, on item D2, I live in the Eagle Ranch area, so this assessment district would affect me, so I need to leave the room out of an abundance of caution, according to the city attorney.
Very well.
Well, that raises a question. The Citywide Landscape Maintenance District, we all live in the city, we have to, to be on the council, so we're all prohibited from discussing this?
The Citywide one, you'd have a public generally exception to it, so you find there. On these smaller ones, they affect a much smaller number of properties, so the possibility of a conflict is greater.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, D2, Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number two, Eagle Ranch, adopt resolution number 15-007 for the existing Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number two, setting the time, date, and place for a public hearing pursuant to Proposition 218 and the proposed assessment amount and an annual cost inflator in accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 and Proposition 218 for the perpetual maintenance of the landscape and irrigation system and facilities. And two, approve the engineer's report for the existing Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number two.
The, Madam Mayor, I have a question.
Yes.
We're reading daily and constantly about the governor's declaration of the drought, and the Citywide, does that include city properties that are in medians? Because we have grass there, and we're gonna have to address that.
Doug, I, you'd probably be better to answer that.
Probably have to. Down here, I think the public is gonna ask those questions, so...
Yeah, the answer to that is yes, it absolutely does. And I think what they term it is ornamental grass. We'll have to look at removing that in any of our medians or LMS out there. But the good news is, we've already been in that process. We've already been working with MWA on the Green Tree Islands to replace that grass this next year. There's some on 7th and a few in the LMS that we'll be looking at as well.
I'll go ahead and move for adoption of resolution number 15-007, as well as engineer's report. I'll second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
Item D3, Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number three, Brentwood, adopt resolution number 15-008 for the existing Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number three, setting the time and date and place for a public hearing pursuant to Proposition 218 and the proposed assessment amount and an annual cost inflator in accordance with the Landscaping and Lighting Act of 1972 and Proposition 218 for the perpetual maintenance of the landscape and irrigation systems and facilities. And two, approve the engineer's report for the existing Citywide Landscape Maintenance Assessment District, number three.
Question to the city attorney, since I own property there, do I have to declare conflict, the same as?
You own property in the Brentwood?
Yes.
Out of an abundance of caution, I would declare the conflict and leave the dais.
Okay.
Have a motion?
I'll move for adoption of resolution 15-008, including the engineer's report.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Cox and Mr. Kennedy absent.
Now we move to D4, award of contract for storm and drain roadway improvements. I believe that's all. Duffy Brothers, Inc. Number one, approve an additional appropriation of $1,268,000 from Fund Number 202 Storm Drain Utility and $388,000 from Fund 230 LTF and $60,000 from Funds 255 Measure I, and number two, award a contract to O Duffy Brothers, Inc. in the amount of $2,286,620.50 for the Bear Valley Road, Nunea Road, Amethyst Road, storm drain and roadway improvements.
Any questions?
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion by?
Everybody can say about time.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
Just a question. I know, Sean, we've got the other project, or Brian, we got the other project on Bear Valley out to bid. Is that correct? On the east side of Bear Valley, or east side of I-15? Just curious when we're going to see that one come forward.
It's not ready to advertise yet, but we've been working on it, and it's a rehabilitation project to replace pavement, the failed pavement, which is between, most of it's between Balsam and I-15. The project's going to stretch over to Amargosa, so it'll be from Balsam to Amargosa. We also contacted the city of Asbury, and they're interested in including some on their side, but it's hard to tell right now when we'll be ready to advertise. We, it is budgeted for this upcoming fiscal year. We were planning on probably late summer going to construction sometime in that timeframe.
Okay, thank you. That's, I'm just curious as to when that one will be coming back before.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you. Now we're on D5, contract award for water holding tanks, Malloy Construction. That the Victor Valley Water District Board of Directors award Malloy Construction the contract to furnish and deliver two 20,000 gallon water holding tanks as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2014-2015 Capital Improvement Project CIP Budget.
I'll go ahead and move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Negretti. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
D6, contract award for emergency generator Champion Electric. That the Victor Valley Water District Board of Directors award Champion Electric a contract to purchase, deliver, test, deliver, test and install a Caterpillar model C-15-600KW diesel generators set at the 395 Booster Pump Station as budgeted for in the fiscal year 2014-2015 Capital Improvement Project CIP Budget.
No questions, I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
On D7, I do have a card. I'll read first amendment number one to construction contract Victor Concrete. That the city council approve amendment number one for the increase in award of a construction contract to Victor Concrete in the not to exceed amount of $187,500 for a total contract not to exceed amount of $274,500 for concrete repair and/or replacement services for fiscal year 2014-2015. And I have a card from Robert Harriman. If you will please come up.
When this contract first was awarded, I came up and spoke and mentioned a couple of issues. First, the contractors from out of the area, and city manager Robertson's explained to me that they were the only contractor that submitted a bid. I'm curious as to why this contract is, is this contract being extended, or is the amount just being risen? Because I really believe that this type of work should be executed by local contractors. We want to help the area here. So if it's a contract extension, I'm against it. Let's put the remainder, I guess it's about $90,000, why don't we put that up for bid? I know the dollar amount has already obviously been set, but is this all included in the one-year existing contract, or are we extending the term of the contract?
City manager.
This is actually an amendment to that contract. The original contract was for $87,000. The contractor has agreed to, or he essentially gave us a quote for some additional work. It was not an increase to the work that he's already done for us. This is additional work to fill in a couple of areas where we need some sidewalk work completed. So it would be additional to what was originally done.
Well, I would ask that the council think about letting Victor Concrete out of Riverside do what he was originally contracted to do, and any additional work that the city deems necessary, let's put that up for bid to us local concrete guys. Okay? I don't see a problem with that. I was given the opportunity to bid on this work and was unable to do it because I was in Iowa at the time that the invitation came to my office. So I'm lobbying here for a little bit of help. Let's bring some of this work to the local contractors. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have two questions. First is for the city attorney. When you, when a city issues a contract, they can amend and add to the contract. Is there a limitation on the percent of the original contract that can be added, or is it open-ended?
I'm not sure what the limitations are. I know this would fall within the category of being able to do that amendment.
I thought it couldn't exceed the original amount.
I would have to review that, I'm not sure.
I don't know why I think that. I just kind of remember sometime or other we were bidding some project, and there could be an addition and addendums, but I thought there was a limitation on the addendums that it couldn't. I was under the impression it could not exceed the original contract, but we don't know. Secondly, this is an addendum to the existing contract, which means that this would expire into this fiscal year, June 30, 2014, so for 2015, 16, we'd go out to bid again?
If it's, excuse me, if it's the council's desire, we could, next project that comes up, we could go out to bid for that one. It's essentially a separate project because there's staff time involved, both at the department level as well as in purchasing and doing bids and receiving bids and things. The staff's opinion was that it was easier to simply use the one bidder that had bid previously to do this work. If the council is so inclined, we could bid this work completely separately at a later time. This isn't work that's particularly time-sensitive. These are holes in our sidewalk system that have been there for years and years and years, and staff is just simply taking an opportunity to get some of them filled. But to, if it's the council's desire to bid this work, we could do that, or we could award this and make sure that the next concrete work that comes up, we go out to bid another time. It's really a pleasure of the council.
I would say that we need to do that, definitely.
That would give you the opportunity to find out the answer to the question as well to determine whether or not we're exceeding the bid amount.
So, put this off and go out to bid on this work, since it, I mean, if it's not an emergency repair of any sort, we have time on it?
Yeah, if that's the desire of the council, we could simply reject this and go out to bid on these.
I want to state that I have looked at the sidewalks that are being constructed excellent. I have no complaint, workmanship, concrete, nothing, but I'd like to have these other questions answered because we have budgets coming up, we're going to be dealing with, how much do we spend next year? Do we go to bid for it? So there's a lot of issues here, I'm sorry, but I'd like to get them answered. Does it cause any hardship if I make a motion just to continue this for two weeks until we can get some of these answers, or do?
Well, yeah, I guess I was just going to follow what Doug was suggesting that we can do as a council is just reject, or say, exactly what would we be doing? Saying no to this amendment?
Yeah, you would essentially say no to the amendment and instead direct staff to bid this work.
Bid this work, okay, that would be my motion.
Yep. My second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
Now we're moving on to D8, AB 914-TOLE, facilities in the county of San Bernardino. And I do have some cards.
Madam Mayor, if I might, because this was at my request, and little did I know the brouhaha that would come out of Sandbag last week, but I'm going to withdraw this request and ask the council not to take any action tonight. I think that we have in the past have had a legislative review committee that would review legislation on, that the council was being asked to support or oppose. In this case, this is probably germane to go to such a committee. I ask that at a future council meeting, the council consider reinstating the legislative review committee to look at this, as well as other legislation that's being, coming before this body, requesting our support or opposition. So I know there are people that want to speak here tonight, but at this point, I'm withdrawing my request to even consider support for this.
All in agreement, or any discussion?
I don't know that there's a motion if I withdraw it because it was at my request, that it be on the agenda. That's up to our city attorney.
Well, I spoke to Mr. McEckern before the council meeting. I indicated I'd read this, but I need a lot more information, and of course, I stopped because I didn't know if somebody else had spoken to him. As you know, we've council members can't discuss the matter, we have to discuss it here. But it was my intent to say you need to put this off quite a ways in the future to see what we're faced with, the who, why, when, or what and how. So I'm pleased that you're withdrawing it because I'm certainly not prepared to even starting to act on this at this point.
All in agreement.
If that's a motion, I'd be more happy to second it. Anytime this was going to come back, you know we're going to have a lively discussion on it, but it really seems premature at this time to even address it, so.
Is it a motion to table, or you just want to withdraw the item? All right. That would not necessarily require a motion, but if you'd like, you should probably take the comments if people do want to speak.
Oh, well, withdraw it.
Three minutes.
Okay, first is Tressie Capps, and then after that will be Jim Corcoran. So, Tressie, will you please come up?
Three minutes?
Three minutes, yes.
Hi, my name is Tressie Capps. I drove from Fontana, and I want to point out that I came here toll-free, and I had no problem getting here. And I want to thank you, Mr. McEckern, for being wise and for backing away from this letter, because I understand you're the vice president of Sandbag, but there's a lot more due diligence that needs to be done before we all throw our support behind toll lanes in the inland empire. Speaking about that, I've started a grassroots effort on Facebook. It's called Toll Free IE, and I encourage everyone who's watching this to go to this Facebook page, like it, and watch some of the videos. You will be stunned at what you find. Our YouTube videos have thousands of hits. I went to a CAG meeting, and it wasn't exactly a transparent process. I was treated like a criminal, and I was told I could not videotape. If you don't have Facebook, you can Google toll lane scam, and you will find the videos. If you do not get on YouTube, you can always call me. My cell phone is 951-333-2000. My name is Tressie Capps, and this Toll Free IE grassroots effort, it's not going to go away. We don't want toll lanes in the inland empire. I bought the dot com, and this movement is going to move forward, and there will not be toll lanes in the inland empire, because once they get them on the 10, then they want to put them on the 15, then the 60, and then the 210, and it's like a cancer that spreads. Out here in the inland empire, people do not have the finances to pay for toll lanes. Measure I funds were already collected and used to build the freeways. Now, Sandbag, who I like to call Scambag, they've already started to call these freeways corridors in anticipation of their little scheme, but it's not going to work. We are going to stop them. We are going to fight this, and you will continue to hear from us. And, Mr. McEckern, I really hope that you will join Fontana and Chino and some of the other cities that are leaning towards opposing this, and be a leader in your community, sir. Please. And again?
I've 30 seconds.
Toll Free IE is the name of this movement. You're going to be hearing a lot more from us. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you for withdrawing that letter. If you want to write your own letter in support as Mr. McEckern, the vice president of Sandbag that you like that bill?
For 10 seconds?
Then you go right ahead. Thank you so much. Good night.
Thank you. Now, I have Jim Corcoran.
Hi there, Mayor Garcia and council members. My name is Jim Corcoran. I have lived in the Victor Valley for, and worked here for 25 years, and I just want to go on record saying I'm very much against toll roads and toll lanes. I used the toll roads in Orange County, and I don't like it, but if I go that way, I don't have a choice. I have to use the toll, the toll roads to get where I want to go. And I would much rather see carpool lanes if we need to handle the traffic better, but I don't want to see toll roads in the inland empire. So please consider my request, and thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you.
John Wesley Nobles, and after that will be Deanne DeLeon.
Good evening, council. I stand in opposition to toll roads. I'm from Dorwich, Connecticut, spent some time in the east. I hated it, hated the shelling out every time you drove down the road. As Ms. Capps said, we paid for these roads, and now we get a shot at renting them back. The only thing I see happening with a toll road, there is a benefit to the people that collect the toll, people that pay it. I don't think so. A toll is like a fee, like a license fee. It's a tax. We're taxed enough already. We're going to take effective action. We do not consent to this. We will not stand down. You can expect us to fight. We're not going to lay over and just lay down and accept toll roads here or anywhere else in California if we can avoid it. I would urge everybody to take another look at this proposal. At first blush, it all looks great. Of course, we've seen a lot of things with the government, they all look great, and they don't turn out so well. We've had diamond lanes for years. I don't see any improvement in the traffic. Matter of fact, I see it slowing it down. Again, I think the only people that will benefit from this are the people that are operating, collecting the tolls. I would urge you to oppose this proposal. We are going to. We're going to fight. We're not going away, as Ms. Capps says. We're not- going to accept this laying down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After Deanne, I have Raul Rodriguez, that will be coming up. No, Deanne, you're on now.
Thank you, City Council, for letting me speak. September of 2013, I came in with a packet, gave it to the city clerk, it looked like this. She passed it all on to the city council. When I came back to talk, I found out that most of them didn't do their homework. I'm a retired teacher, I believe in people doing their homework. Inside the packet was a book that looked like this, Agenda 21. If you read this, you'd understand, that's where all this is coming from. Also, there is a DVD. The people who were in the council in September of 2013 had a DVD. There was also a DVD that came from England. They are losing their right to decide what they want to do, because of Agenda 21. If you haven't read through it yet, do your homework. There are parts in here where you can write in the column about what everything means. And a man named Dan Titus is the person who gave these books to be given out. I hope he also has another one out for the county of San Bernardino. And you might have seen it. Mr. McEckern? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for, my name is Raul Rodriguez Jr., and I live in Apple Valley. I want to thank you for allowing me to exercise my First Amendment rights. First of all, I would like to start by giving you a gift, each and every one of you. Agenda 21, I brought enough copies for each one of you, so you can review this and find out what Agenda 21 is doing, and our big government is overstepping their constitutional rights. First of all, each and every one of you took an oath of office. And that oath of office is to serve the American people, and the welfare, and the interests of the American people. And secondly, we have a constitution. You also took an oath, under the Constitution, for the welfare of the American people, and to serve the American people. Your number-one responsibility is the people themselves, to serve them, because you actually work for them. Because you, we are your employer, and you work for us. That's a reminder, you need to remember that. You work for the people, not for your party, not for your personal ideology, but for the people. And also, I would like to say that by serving the American people and working for the American people, you're doing your job, which means you could remain and keep that job. If you don't do your job, then you might be on the unemployment line, and somebody else is going to take your place. So, just remember, think about serving the American people first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Those are all the cards that I have for D8. So, we will be moving on to D9. Bear Valley Road, I-15, traffic signal equipment upgrades. That the city council appropriate an additional $30,000 for replacing and upgrading traffic signal equipment at Bear Valley Road and I-15, to enable communications with city signals and improve coordination. Can we have a motion? Or discussion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Mr. Cox. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
D10, City Council Policy Number CP-15-02, inner fund loan policy. That the city council and the Board of Directors for the Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, and the Victorville Water District, collectively, the governing bodies, adept the city council policy number CP-15-02.
This is a revision, rather than a brand-new policy? Is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
That's correct. This is based on recommendations from the grand jury from a few years ago. This item was, hasn't been completed yet, mostly because we were told by the city council not to engage in any additional interfund borrowing, or any loans for that matter, or bonds, or any borrowing at all, which staff was fully supportive of. Because we have one remaining loan, that's the next item on the agenda, that needs an extension due to an inability to go out for additional bonding right now, we felt, prior to doing that, that we should go ahead and adopt the new policy, implementing those guidelines from the grand jury report.
I move adoption.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cox, second by Mr. McEckern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
D11, First Amendment to Promissory Note, Victorville Water District Waste Water Enterprise. That the Victorville Water District Board of Directors consider the First Amendment to Promissory Note by and between Victorville Water District, on behalf of the Victorville Water District Waste Water Enterprise, and the Victorville Water District Water Enterprise Fund.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McEckern, second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries with Mr. Kennedy absent.
Item E, public comments. Public comment on items of interest to the public. This is the time and place for general public to address the city council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda, per Government Code Section 54954. Three, state law prohibits the council from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The council may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less, as deemed necessary by the mayor, depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak. All communications are to be addressed directly to the council, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises, or engaging in any activity which might be disruptive to the quorum of the meeting. I do have some cards here, and I will call up Elle Guttil. I believe he's gone, so the next person I have is Maggie Lowe.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First of all, let me tell you very quickly and very briefly, I apologize for what I consider inappropriate conduct on the part of people that don't even live in the city of Victorville to come and give you, take you to school, so to speak, on the issues of the Constitution. I just made it clear to them, and I think you're well aware that you serve the public, as do the law enforcement members here, and that they don't live here, and I don't appreciate that kind of comment. I support their cause, but the lecture, in my opinion, was unnecessary. So, anyway, I'm going to jump around on a bunch of things here, I have written statements. Okay. This is regarding the last meeting on March 17 of the council. I received a phone message at my home phone number from a man named Jim. It was regarding the council vote to not renew the red light camera enforcement effect of July 2015. I didn't return the call. A few days or so later, I received a letter with my full name on it, which I don't know how he obtained. Said letter is enclosed here for your reference. I noted with interest that this letter was mailed from Hermosa Beach, California. I am stating for the record that I have no interest whatsoever in jumping on any political bandwagon, but rather that my opinions on city items are simply that, my opinions, and I will plead my own causes. Number two, regarding any future discussions about possibly reinstating the red light cameras, I will adamantly oppose that. I suggest that instead of spending valuable public, excuse me, council public time on this issue, that we put it before the voters of the city of Victorville. I feel confident that red light cameras do not have the majority support of the public. Three, I am formally requesting that the council direct the appropriate city department to conduct a speed rating survey on eucalyptus between Cobalt West to US Highway 395. If conducted at the right time, the severity of the traffic situation, I'm sorry, traffic situation would be acknowledged by the city. It is also my suggestion that the city install a four-way stop sign at eucalyptus and tow pass, in an effort to slow the traffic flow. Additionally, I really think the true solution to this problem is speed bumps. They are, as we know, highly effective. They will not only save the city cost of deputy patrol, it will save lives. Four, another very disconcerting fact of this traffic problem is the noise that it creates. Please see the magazine article I provided for your review. I actually forgot it, I apologize. Just recently, the Center for Disease Control in Atlanta has concluded that excessive noise is the number-one health risk in America, ahead of cancer and other diseases. Excessive noise prompts the body's-
You have 30 seconds.
...flight or flight mechanism, which can impair overall health. Five, another concern of mine is the number of people I see all over the high desert, driving while texting and talking while driving, not hands-free. And I'm sure there's people here that do that. Red light cameras aside, I can clearly see how this disregard for the public's safety can have a life-or-death outcome. I am dismayed by-
You have 10 seconds.
I am dismayed by my perception that people get to choose which laws they obey. I would like to see more aggressive enforcement of this law. Additionally, we have a very large number of people in Victorville driving with expired tags. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have RJ Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor Garcia, City Council members. Mayor Cox, former Mayor Cox. I know, I recognize a few faces up here today, been a while. But my concern, I came this afternoon just to ask a question or two about the repairs on my streets. I've lived in Victorville since 1979. I'm stationed at Georgia Air Force Base, retired military, and I live off of Village Drive, Manning Street. And I'm concerned with Village Drive, the condition of the road itself. Also, Amago's Road, some parts of it, the north end especially. If someone could, if there's some other procedure, I need some requests, some whether we're making a request or asking these questions, I would appreciate it. But I just wanted to ask if there's any plans, if there are any plans in the future, to do any repairs on those roads, because they're really bad. Mojave is, I mean, Village is really, really bad from, I think, from Tunny Ridge to Air Expressway, especially, in that area. So if you drive that road, you will understand what I'm talking about. So, that is my question. Are there any plans on repairs?
Yeah, we'll have our city engineer get in touch with you, he's in the audience now, give you his business card, so that he can discuss where it is in the planning process. I've driven Village Drive many times, and I agree with you, it is in disrepair. I know it's on the list, but I couldn't tell you exactly where. He'd be able to give you a better idea, so he'll be in touch with you soon, either through the information on your card, or if he gets a moment to talk to you, maybe after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the cards that I have. So, now we move on to a report from City Manager.
Just one, this Saturday is our community cleanup day, so those of you that have signed up, come out and get dirty and make the desert clean. So, there's a lot of talk right now about cleaning up the desert, and a lot of different ideas on how and who should be in charge of it. We do this twice a year. We're very proud of our efforts. We usually get seven to eight hundred people out, helping cleaning up our desert landscaping.
Thank you. Reports from city, from council members?
Oh, oh! Yes, sorry, thank you for reminding me. Usually, Mr. Cox, we would have it up here on the table in front of us, and would have been a huge reminder.
You want me to go get it?
No, 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 that's okay. But Mr. Cox, Mr. Kennedy, and myself, and our risk manager Chuck Kay, took part in the Apple Valley Chamber Golf Tournament, and went up against the town of Apple Valley, as we have traditionally in the past, and we did win by some eighth strokes, or something along those lines. But anyway, so we kept the trophy for another year, so. Thank you for the reminder, Mr. Cox.
Important event.
Yes.
You know, guys, it's been here in City Hall for so long, that it's just sort of a fixture. It didn't look odd at all for me to see it, so, it's nothing new. We've had it for so long.
Anyone else?
Hi, Madam, Madam Mayor, I do have a comment about the community cleanup day. I'm actually planning on participating, looking forward to it. And I think that, you know, we get a lot of complaints about what's not being done, and what we're not doing, and, you know, you can look around the desert, obviously, and there's some challenges. But I'd just like to thank the staff for putting this together, because it does show that we do care. And there are a lot of great folks in this city that take pride in the desert, and take pride in Victorville. And obviously, we're not the ones, folks that feel like that are not the issue. But there are people that do not care about the rules. There are people that will not put stuff in a dumpster. I, myself, am prepared at all times to take TVs or whatever I see to a hazmat spot, instead of complaining. But, you know, complaining is a lot easier. But I'm going to do my part, and I hope that everyone else can give some time to their city this weekend.
Thank you. It is enjoyable, I have participated, and believe me, it was fun, collecting trash. Anything else? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.